Right, I'm going to call to order the meeting for February 12th, 2015. Would you all please drive to the place where it is?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, on a job, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Director Miller.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Ushka.
Here.
Director Viel.
Here.
Director Heinz.
Here.
Student Representative French.
Here.
Right, adoption of the agenda.
I move adoption of the agenda for this evening. Second.
President Heinz, I'd like to amend the agenda to move item three down to item four and item four to up to item three.
Right, any questions or comments on that, the reordering of the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item number two, recognition of staff, students, and community.
Thank you, President Heinz and members of the board. So last, um, that, "The Colleges That Change Lives" is an international nonprofit organization that was formed by a select group of prestigious colleges and universities, and each year they scour the world looking for educators to honor with their Counselors That Change Lives Award. And this year, the organization selected eight honorees from around the world, including Matthew Burns, Wilson High School Guidance Counselor. This award recognizes the dedication to the college counseling profession and reflects the mission of Colleges That Change Lives. Three University of Puget Sound staff members co-nominated Mr. Burns for this award. Among his many accomplishments as a counselor, Mr. Burns is a founding partner of the Tacoma College and Career Fair, which has grown in eight years to bring more than fifteen hundred attendees and one hundred and ninety colleges and organizations together. My family's been a beneficiary of Mr. Burns' effort. In October, I attended the College and Career Fair with my daughter, who's a junior this year. She's been researching colleges with the top biotechnology programs. I don't know what biotechnology is, but it sounds pretty good. At the top of her list is the University of California Davis, and fortunately, UC Davis had two representatives at this year's college fair. My daughter was thrilled to make that contact, and during spring break, we're going to make a campus visit. So I can personally say that Mr. Burns doesn't just change lives, he changes them for the better. And now, Wilson Principal Dan Bisset will formally introduce our award winner to you.
Good evening. I'm just going to be brief, because I think that's what you guys like sometimes. We've got a lot of stuff going on tonight. I'm just thinking back eight years ago when we were having our traditional college fairs on our campus. And I remember Matt and Joe and our counselors said, "We can do this better. I know we can do it better." And I said, "Well, tell me what you need." And they worked with CTE, and they put it together, and it's grown to exactly what has been talked about. And anytime I've got tough questions about NCA Clearinghouse, difficult questions about college acceptance needs and things like that, there is a young man I go to, and it's Matt Burns. So, there you go.
I just want to say thank you very much. The college fair couldn't happen without Joe Ranero. Where's Joe? Joe is the other co-founder of the college fair. He takes care of all of the career opportunities. I wrangle all the colleges, and it's a great honor. Thank you very much, and I love my job, and this is just something that kind of tops it off. Thank you so much.
Mr. Burns, would you please come up so that we can thank you?
From the side. Oh, sorry. Somebody has to do it. Outside, outside. Inside. There we go. Thank you. Thanks very much. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, Mary.
No, no, thank you very much. Thank you, President Heinz and members of the board. Last week was National School Counseling Week, and in conjunction with that week, the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction awards the Career Guidance Award of Excellence to middle schools and high schools that demonstrate outstanding high standards for the development of school-wide college and career readiness. Now, you don't need to be a rocket scientist to figure out why two of our high schools won the award this year. Wilson High School recorded a ninety-one point one percent graduation rate for the class of 2014, the highest among Tacoma's comprehensive high schools, and Lincoln High School increased its graduation rate for the class of 2014 by thirteen point three percent to seventy-nine percent, the largest increase of any Tacoma high school. Both schools have recorded big gains in dual-credit course offerings, students taking advanced classes, students taking college entrance exams, high numbers of college-bound scholars, increased college visits, more verified college acceptance letters, and a relentless determination to fight for the success of every student every day. To introduce the honored teams from each school and share a bit more about their work are the two principals. From Lincoln, Pat Irwin, and from Wilson, Dan Bisset.
I will keep my remarks very brief. I have a dog at home that needs to be taken out in a basketball game that needs to be supervised, and I need to meet my father, who traveled from New York, so he can watch basketball with me tonight. My guy, Brandon Irwin. I want Brandon to come on up. When I say "my guy," he is just a great person in every conceivable respect. In fact, he's so great that Central Office stole him from me, and he's now the head of Career and College Guidance down here at Central Office. Huge asset for the district, a loss for Lincoln. Brandon's going to introduce the people he's worked with who's made a big difference in our kids' lives, so Brandon Irwin.
Well, this is the second year that Lincoln High School has won this award, so I want to make sure that I also recognize the hard work that is put into this. The Lincoln High School team that is here, please stand. In the crowd today that is standing, what really pushes the force, Nikki, Tricia Zimmerman, our registrars, and our counseling support staff. Please recognize them. For the content specific, in order to write those essays, you need a great English teacher, Michelle Snellgrove. Christine Snellgrove, sorry. We have to equate those numbers for the application costs. Sarah Kettleson, our math instructor. Two of our wonderful graduate support specialists, they were added to the team, but you can find them day in and day night, supporting our kids. Even right now, I've seen them reading emails about access. Jake Clausen, Paul McGrath. One of the consistent adults in our building, who's been at Lincoln High School for ten years. But I'll be honest, you won't find him sitting in the classroom, you'll see him in front of students. Robert Jones, the Cause Success Foundation. The award obviously recognized the access and opportunity that has been provided to our students. As you all heard, Pat Irwin say something special about me, I'll be honest, the work comes because of his leadership. So I want to make sure that you recognize, Pat, and you hear it from me, we need more administrators like you to continue pushing this work. Thank you.
So, remind me not to follow him again, okay? He's too good. So can I have everybody come up here and see me? I'm going to introduce you up here. I've got to figure out something cool, because I was really good. So, first we have Carrie Ellen Elston. And if you heard very carefully, her daughter said yay in the back. Your mom did good, very good. And we have Jared Gibson next to her. Nancy Sprick is our College Success Foundation Counselor. I have to mention that Nancy kind of puts me to shame, because I think she might work more hours than I do, and I'm crazy with hours, so...
Please, go home.
Rich Coleman, next. The infamous, infamous in his own mind, Joe Ranero. So Joe is retiring this year, and last summer, we were talking, and I said to him, I go, "Hey, why don't you go out on top? Walk out at the top of your game?" Because that necessarily doesn't happen every time when we get close to retirement, because we're tired. And he has stepped up to a level that I can't even imagine that we can emulate next year. So, Joe?
Keep it going. You've got about how many days?
Four months and a day.
Okay, all right. And then you, you know Matt Burns, so there's our crew. That ninety-one-one is, right there, and some great teachers. And I have to mention one other thing. Hey, Jake, where'd you prep at? Come on. Oh, and Paul, Paul, where was your first position at? Okay, just needed to point that out, okay.
Would the teams from Lincoln and Wilson please come up so we can thank you and congratulate you? All right, item three on the agenda, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I asked the board if I could give a little context. I know there's a lot of people in the audience here that are here to talk about testing, and I heard a rattle, I heard a big rattle about my testimony in the legislature on Tuesday. So I just wanted to give you a little context. I want to hear what you have to say, and I know it makes a lot of sense, but I just want to give you a context for what my comments were about. So first of all, my thought about standardized testing. I think standardized testing is one facet of what we do, and it shouldn't be the be-all and the end-all. I think the thing that's gone on with the national No Child Left Behind has really been sad. And the funny, I was thinking about it, and the funny thing is, it's been going on forever. When I was an elementary principal, I remember my office coordinator came in late one day, and she says, "Carla, I'm so sorry I was late." She said, "We were up, I was up all night with my daughter." I said, "Why were you up all night with your daughter?" She said, "We have the I encyclopedia. We were trying to learn everything we could about Iowa for that Iowa Test of Basic Skills." The Iowa Test of Basic Skills. The only people who laughed are people that are as old as I am. The rest of you, the rest of you don't remember it, but that used to be our standardized test, and she thought it was all about learning about Iowa, and it's not. And so it's always given us, I think, some insecurity and some angst about, you know, testing our students. And we all know that some kids test really, really well, and that other students do not test well. I still believe, though, that there is a place for standardized testing, and it needs to be that one small facet of what we do when we look at children. I'll talk about evaluation in a minute. It does inform us locally about how we're doing. It helps us with what our state placement is and our nation placement. And it can also help us to kind of calibrate what our work is according to other, you know, other districts or other states. And so I think it is an important measure, but the thing is, is I definitely think that we have started to overuse it. In evaluation, my thoughts about standardized testing in evaluation. No teacher should ever be fired on the basis of a test. You should not be evaluated on the basis of a single test. I do not believe in that. I have, I have been in your ranks, I've been a teacher, and I, I was very good, but I know that I couldn't have stood the test of having a test determine what my evaluation was, even in a growth analysis. So, if you look, it should have no connection to your own classroom measures. I know that many of you, some of the work we've done in Tacoma that is so impressive, is I go into buildings and I see teachers sitting together in grade-level groups, and they're looking at their classroom assessments, and they're comparing what their work is. They're examining student work, that's what's going to make the difference. And then if we have this measure, this standardized test measure, that kind of gives you a look at how you're doing with that, then that's the only part that this test should have in evaluation. So, what did I say at the legislature? Number one, I said, the part of the bill that I like is that it does talk about making sure we have multiple measures. I'm going to read just this one little part from the bill. Whoops, 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 sorry. It says, "Student growth data that is relevant to the teacher and subject matter must be a factor in the evaluation process. It must be based on multiple measures that can be included in, that include classroom-based, school-based, district-based, and state-based tools. Teachers who teach reading, or language arts, or mathematics in a grade, which is at the federally mandated statewide student assessments level, are administered, they still have to have one of the multiple measures of student growth must be in the student's result on the relevant assessments." And it says that we can also use those data elements with the teacher's performance as a member of a team within a school, when the data is relevant and appropriate, or the overall instructional team of a school, when the data, when this data is appropriate. I think that that is the proper way to use an assessment, to have it be one factor in the measure of how you're doing with your students. I don't believe, I don't believe that it should be the only measure. We have six criteria, and our teacher evaluation, we should continue to use that six criteria to say, to do what we're, you know, to do the work that we're doing in the classroom. The bill, if you look at the bill, it talks about local control, it talks about multiple measures, it says that we can have teacher input into the process, it says that it won't take effect, the other second part of it, fifty-eight forty-nine, says that they'll give us plenty of time to figure out how to work it. The year sixteen seventeen would be the start, and I love the part about you can use it as a unit, and it doesn't even have to be individual, it can be grade levels and instructional units. And I love the word about teacher and student input. My final words, I made one big mistake, and that is, I didn't talk to Angel and Jessica before I went down there, and I should always do that, and make sure. I should have showed them my testimony and told them what I was going to say before I went down. It's amazing, some of the results I heard about what I said that I didn't. Some people were upset that it sounded like I had said that Tacoma was already involved in this. My actual words were that we have, and I am grateful to be a part of a union team that are great leaders, and that they are advocates for students and for teachers, and that we already have a growth component in our student evaluation. All that is true, and that's all I was trying to say, is let people know that we are currently using it. I do believe in the bill as it's written, because I believe it requires, it provides adequate leeway in what we need to do, and that it's very close to what we're doing already. I'm invested in getting rid of the constraints of NCLB, which really requires us to use testing in an antiquated way. So, I just want you to know, I've got your back, and when I don't sound like I have your back, I'm glad that you let me know, and, you know, continue to give me that feedback. Be nice. Thank you.
All right, any questions or comments from the directors on the Superintendent's Report? But from our student representative, is one of the test takers, thoughts or comments? I would just add, I think this board has demonstrated our support of multiple measures, and when we talk about assessment, I think unfortunately, through No Child Left Behind, assessment has become synonymous with high-stakes standardized tests. And I am comforted when I look at the federal level, I think that there's an opportunity for Congress to reauthorize the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, and on both sides, both chambers, House and Senate side, they're talking about multiple measures. I think they're going to get away from this federal mandate of high-stakes standardized test as the be-all and end-all to determine if kids are learning and if teachers are teaching. And so, and I think that the work of this board in this district in helping to lead that, and the fact that we now have a bill at the state level that uses the word multiple measures, I think is incredibly illustrative of the influence that we've had over the years. And Superintendent, I thank you for coming up and owning your comments and helping to provide context, and I look forward to hearing from the members of the audience, as I know the rest of my colleagues do, what you'd like to share with us this evening. And with that?
First speaker, Kim Golding, and second one is Susan Ryan.
And let me just provide the ground rules.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So, the school board members encourage public participation, your input is appreciated. If you'd like to address the school board, follow these steps. Complete a citizen's request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Card submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You will have up to three minutes to share your comments. And you'll see the, I know that Ms. Golding is very familiar with the process, but you'll see the clock over there ticking down. You'll get a ding on the bell when you have a minute left, and then a ding when your time is completed. And given the fact that we have a number of speakers tonight, please do honor the three-minute time limit.
All right. My name is Kim Golding. I'm a former school board member. There was a time when the district was focused on personalized learning, when the district didn't have grant writers chasing dollars using tons of data. So many changes have been driven by outsiders profiting from data collection, and by the need for money, money the district should have been receiving all along. Now, while waiting years for a COLA, teachers experience greater demands of their time, more out-of-pocket medical expenses, and shrinking opportunities to creatively teach. They must conform to standards set forth by non-educators and the lawmakers working in DC and Olympia. Teachers are tired and afraid. Standardized testing is sucking the joy out of everything. Children are expected to sit for hours at computers and practicing taking tests. Our youngest kids are getting, not getting enough playtime, and this is how they learn, by play. As cost-cutting decisions are made, teachers watch as their jobs are divided and eliminated. Electives are being replaced with credit retrieval courses and courses tied to tests. The teachers now talk about having to sneak in art projects and other fun things. Recession's sometimes withheld from students, even though it is against district policy. Educators who have made a difference with passion and love are finding themselves on the defensive, defending both their profession and how they teach. With a huge focus on measurable results, the unmeasurable accomplishments appear to no longer matter to you. It's about data, test scores, graduation rates, and a future workforce. It's not about what's best for our kids. Does the district really want to give a test that has a large guaranteed failure rate built into it? So why would the district want to link student test scores to teacher and principal evaluations? If the district supports a parent's right to opt out, then how would tying evaluation tests work? If you think opting out is wrong, then how can you justify taking away parent rights? For years, we've known that poverty isn't being addressed, that you can move the educators around like chairs on the deck, and you'll still find kids living in poverty. If you were a teacher in a high-poverty school and you knew that test scores were going to be low again, would you stick around for the inevitable? Teachers are figuring out their next careers. Why would we want this Tacoma? Wouldn't we want stability for our kids and their schools? Do we want our schools to be full of test givers instead of credential educators? Are you pushing away our best-ever educators for the sake of test scores? Tacoma should turn back the clock, end the runaway data collection train. Please share with parents how to opt out. Parents have the right to refuse the standardized testing of their children. Thank you.
Susan Ryan?
Good evening. My name is Susan Ryan, and I'm here to be the voice of the silent majority opposed to the domination and control that testing companies such as Pearson hold over our students, schools, and teachers, made possible by No Child Left Behind. Over the past twelve-plus years, school districts have relinquished control of their duties, only to be driven to jump through hoops by the results of standardized tests, claiming to determine the future track and performance outcomes of students, teacher quality, and school success. Everyone knows these tests are not a true measure of student achievement and are being used for wrong purposes. Yet the adults in charge continue to fall in line, doing as they are told, desperate for funding. We now know, we now have yet another numerical curriculum and high stakes test being pitched to us this year. I wrote to you all last May, expressing my concerns about it. I asked for you to slow down and take a wait-and-see approach before investing any further. I asked that you all take these tests before imposing them on students and teachers. I asked for strong leadership, like you have shown in the past when faced with controversial issues. I ask for this again tonight. It is never too late to say no. I believe Tacoma would be the envy of the state for taking this wait-and-see approach by giving students the gift of time. Can you all honestly say that these tests and the new curriculum are developmentally appropriate for all students? Can you say without a doubt that imposing yet another new test, that students are being best served and our tax dollars are not being wasted? Do you approve of students being used as test subjects, used as pawns in their teachers' evaluations? You all are savvy enough to know what is truly driving this shaming of public schools. This won't end, even if all students reach whatever benchmark they are tasked with reaching, because this still will not be good enough. There is too much greed and profit to be made in K through twelve education today, but you can make a difference. Isn't that why you are serving as board members? To make a difference? It may not be long before your voice is removed and you carry no authority at all. Divert the time wasted on test prep, training, and test-taking this year into actual classroom instruction and enrichment. Instead of looking at what you will lose by falling in line, consider how much you can gain by demonstrating strong commitment to what Tacoma has already been doing right. Join forces with the growing number of parents, administrators, teachers, and concerned citizens around the country saying enough is enough. Children are not human capital, they are human beings, individually developing with minds of their own. Don't allow this collection of data to be used in this way. Help and encourage parents to opt their kids out of testing this year. Don't discourage them and imply that experimental tests are merely innocuous-sounding assessment tools. In the bigger picture, it really won't matter if a zero is recorded. Let's move on and embrace the failing label our state has been awarded, because we know it isn't true. Our kids, teachers, and schools are not failures. Our communities are not failures. Only you, with the support of us, can reverse this train wreck and take the path less traveled. Please have parents help them with opting out. Parents have the right to refuse the standardized test. Thank you.
Sandy Strong. Followed by Tom O'Kelly.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Strong, and I have two students in Tacoma Public Schools. This will be the third year that I've opted my children out of the high-stakes standardized tests, not because they do not do well on tests, but because the data from these tests is inaccurate, and that data is used to falsely label our schools and students as failing. And most importantly, the data from my child's test was not useful to me, not in any way. It did not tell me or their teachers anything that we didn't already know from their daily schoolwork. I also opted my children out of these tests, because I knew that in some states, teacher evaluations were tied to student test scores, and I knew that there were groups trying to pass the same law in our state. I do not want to put my kids in a position to feel responsible for their teachers' job security. No child should be thinking in any way about how their test scores might impact their teachers. That is not the purpose of the test. A friend of mine told me that her son thought his teacher would not receive a raise if he didn't do well on the test. Even though that child was mistaken, imagine the stress kids will feel if such a law is passed. Ask a- Ask a child what they think of their SBACK test score being used to evaluate their teacher's performance. My son said that it would be too stressful and he would probably not do well. I didn't coach him. Should a five- or twelve-year-old child's one-time performance in a high-pressure situation ever be responsible for evaluating an adult on anything? Kids should never know or think that their performance on one test could result in harming their teacher or principal. The school is there to serve the students. The students are not there to serve the lawmakers' agenda. I will not put my kids in that position, and they are pretty great test takers. If state tests are made a substantial part of a teacher's evaluation, can you assure me that, as a parent, I will continue to have the right to refuse the test for my children? There are elementary-age students in our district telling their parents already that they don't want to go to school because they are stressed about the test. The federal government is incentivizing the wrong things, and OSPI and TPS are bowing to that rather than pushing back. TPS administrators, teachers, and school board members know what is needed to help all kids learn and succeed, and it is not more high-stakes testing. This year, I began asking questions about the SBACK, and some of what I heard was encouraging, but as I continued asking questions, I developed new concerns for our students. This year's SBACK test takes computer skills that not all third, fourth, and fifth graders have had time to learn. I took the practice test, but first had to learn how to use the testing software, manipulating the digits and the symbols the way the program was written. Our elementary-age students will need to spend time learning the technical aspects of this specific program. Many questions will be incorrectly answered due to technical mistakes, not due to lack of knowledge. My intent in speaking here tonight is to ask that you support parents in opting out of these high-stakes tests by providing them with the information they need to do so. Again, TPS administrators, teachers, and school board members know what is needed to help all kids learn and succeed. I encourage TPS to continue to innovate and to push back against the false belief that testing will lead to improved learning. Thank you.
After Mr. O'Kelly is, wait, I'm sorry, is Eric Benson.
Sorry. Evening. My name is Tom O'Kelly. I'm speaking here, excuse me, speaking here and addressing my current concerns as a teacher about the smarter balanced assessment. The SBA is a terrible thing to unleash on our students, their teachers, their parents, the instructional aides, the district in general. It fails in its proposed purpose, does not, excuse me, jury duty all day and a little dry. Can't do anything to guide student instructions, labels up to two-thirds of our students as failures. Teachers of students labeled as needing remediation after leaving their classes, don't see the kids after they get those scars. What good is that? Those kids then go into new teachers' classes. Those teachers aren't allowed to ever see the questions that were asked, labeling those kids as failures, so they don't know what the standards are that those kids supposedly didn't make. What value does that have? And the test has some frightening consequences. And things I'm about to rattle off here are not made up. These are facts garnered from investigations I did and some questions I asked of people I know in other states that are currently using the SBA and are reasons that over a dozen states have already pulled out and others are looking at it very strongly. Some of the consequences this can anticipate and need to get ready to deal with are early retirements. A lot of great teachers are going to bail from the profession because it's scary. Teachers are leaving because they aren't being allowed to teach, have to follow scripts and pacing guides. Wife and I go to a lot of stage theater. We love it. That's where scripts and pacing guides belong, not in the classroom, on a stage. Teachers are not being allowed to teach. They have to follow those scripts. More students be labeled as failures, also not a good thing to do. Won't matter how often you tell them, "Oh, you're not a failure. It's just one test. It doesn't make up your life." They know better. They know it does. And they're not going to hear us how for many times, "Oh, this test isn't the one good measure." Yeah, it is. They've got it there forever. So, by increasing the number of students labeled as failures, you're going to increase the dropout rate. Increase the dropout rate, which is totally contrary to what the board says district's mission, you're going to cause a couple of things. You're going to increase the numbers of people going through the school-to-prison pipeline. The SBA acts as a really good pump for that. It doesn't need a pump. Going to increase the poverty level. Because people without a good education can't get good jobs. They're stuck in poverty-level jobs, which means their families are poverty-level. And you can check the, check poverty-level neighborhoods. They've got lower-standard students. Sorry about that, but they do. Check poverty levels, neighborhoods, poverty schools, and they are the same places. Connecting these flawed tests to teacher evaluations, also a really bad thing to do. Well, it's just irresponsible. You're not going to find a way to put a moratorium on this debacle of a test for this year. Find a way to make sure parents know that they have a legal right to opt out of it. Thank you.
After Eric Benson is Al Nurse.
A few years ago, I approached Councilmember Miller at the Occupied Tacoma Rally on the Green at Peoples Park, and I asked him, "Do corporations know what is best for students?" And I think he was a little taken aback by my question. And he never answered me, but I think at that time, he would have answered no. So, we talked about the strike and our differences over how it was resolved, and if my member serves me correctly, I think he said he was a longshoreman and he had had an experience on strike. Okay, my memory doesn't serve me.
I'll have what you said is right.
Okay, thank you. So, after asking that question, it seems to me that the district, Teachers United, other seeking positions of leadership on the council and elsewhere, think the answer to that question is yes. Corporations do know what is best for students. Corporations like Pearson, who, if you had listened to NPR's Marketplace the other night, have joined the feeding frenzy of privatization and no-bid contracts to provide cradle-to-grave, turnkey, teach-to-test programs. From the standpoint of ethics and the question of what is good or what is the good, it seems to be going against the intent of that letter that Superintendent Santorno had sent out, explaining to parents this fall that school failure should be taken with a grain of salt. And Tacoma schools are not failing students. It seems that now maybe the district believes ultimately that corporations who create the tests, that abuse the students, that take away valuable instruction time from classrooms, that fail the schools, that pressure the administrations, that evaluate the teachers, should create the professional development that every teacher needs to pass the test. Not be a good instructor, a good teacher with compassion and art, but pass the test. This is not ethics. This is corporate hegemony over our policies, our communities, our families, our schools. Corporations have no ethics. They exist solely to make money for their shareholders and CEOs. And so, I should finally rephrase that question and say, that which has no ethos is in fact not good. That which has no ethos not only does not provide for communities, but robs from communities and forms a usury-like system wherein communities and the working people in them are perpetually in arrears. So my new question would be, do corporations know what is bad for students but good for corporations? And I think the answer would still be yes. So I'm asking if this organization has the political will to stand up to the corporate script that says American students are failing and say, "Our schools are not failing. We need leaders who have the political strength to say so loudly and proudly." Thank you.
President Heinz, I'd like to kind of address a few points he made, just for clarification. I remember our conversation at Occupied Tacoma, and it was during the teacher's strike. And so I thought we had a great conversation. And there was a reason I was at Occupied Tacoma, because I support what it was doing. Also, I don't remember the question about the corporations knowing best. My response would have been, "Hell, no, they don't know what's best, and they're also not people." And I'm not a longshoreman. I was a teamster. And I did go on strike, and I know what it takes to go on strike. I don't know how it impacts people. In fact, I went on strike for three weeks. The difference was, and I didn't, I was not able to make up those funds I lost, those salaries, as the teachers did. And that's where our conversation got a little sideways. And I think you weren't aware of that situation, if I remember right. So, yeah.
Should I answer?
Yeah, please.
No, this, we'll take this conversation offline. This is, this is not a part of the public comment process. If you two would like to talk offline, that would be your prerogative.
So I just wanted to make up a few points, since I was brought up in your conversation. So, thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker?
Listen, Nurse. Following will be Rebecca Padilla.
Good evening. I'm not going to talk to you about testing.[1204.42][1204.42](Laughter). I rise to talk to you about library services in response to your, the article in a newspaper in regards to innovative schools and library services on the Hilltop. As many of you know, the library on the Hilltop, the Martin Luther King Library, was closed in 2010, and there's been no library service provided for the citizens, especially the children in Hilltop community since then. The building was sold, and we are seeking, as a committee, we're the Hilltop Library Planning Committee, and we're seeking to work with the city of Tacoma, the school district, as you look at remodeling MacArthur School, to possibly place in that location a library that the community can use to have access in the evening time and outside school hours, the summertime, evenings, weekends, so forth. Hopefully with ADA access and exterior doors that can be utilized by community citizens. We find it very, very strong in the necessity to address the need for children in the Hilltop community, to have access to literacy in regards to books, technology, and so forth. It's a shame when we have a community of this stature in Tacoma that we do not have library service for everyone in the community. You know, as you look around the greater Tacoma community, there are library services through all the different sub-communities here, but we do not have one in the Hilltop community nor on the east side of Tacoma. So, we asked the board to consider, as they planned the construction of the new MacArthur School, to consider placing in there some type of library service for the community, so the community will have access to library services in the Hilltop community there. So, your consideration for this is very much appreciated. We stand ready to work with you on that if you need some more input on that. We did pass on to you literature for you to peruse through at your leisure in regards to library services and what we're required for services in regards to square footage and costs and so forth. We have been meeting with the city manager's office regarding this. We've been trying to meet with the school, with Amanda, Scott Thomas, and with Stephen Mucicami, to work out some type of plan to see if possible. I believe some of you are at the meeting we spoke to at MacArthur, and we went through this at that time as well. So you probably have a duplicate of some of the material we presented at MacArthur, too. So we appreciate your time, but we do really appreciate you considering providing some type of opportunity for library service at MacArthur for citizens outside of school hours. Thank you for your time.
Rebecca Padilla?
My name is Rebecca Padilla, and I currently have a first and a third grader at Sheridan Elementary and an eighth grader at Columbia Junior High in five. I've been a parent at Sheridan for six years, and I'm currently the PTA president, as well as a leader with Stand for Children. With me are fellow Sheridan parents and PTA members. I first want to thank all of you for your service and commitment to Tacoma students. When my oldest was a fifth grader at Sheridan, I chaperoned a field trip to the zoo with Director Viall, and I know how dedicated she and all of you are to Tacoma students. We'd be honored to have a visit from any of you, and we do have upcoming field trips if you're interested. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of the 605 children at Sheridan Elementary on the east side of Tacoma. The 97 kindergartners, the 100 first graders, the 115 second graders, the 103 third graders, the 96 fourth graders, and the 94 fifth graders. We are overcrowded and understaffed. Our conference room has been turned into a classroom where the children sit on the floor to receive their lessons for the over-capacity second grade. Perhaps the district could consider rezoning or transferring some of these students to other schools in the future, so we can reduce class size, especially in kindergarten through third grade. In the last four years, we've had three sets of administrators. This year, both of our administrators are both from out of district, as well as half of our staff is new to Sheridan. In October, after having lunch with my third grader, I was concerned at how chaotic and out-of-control lunch and recess were. I brought my concerns to the administration, and I was pleased that a plan and procedure was put in place, as well as PBISV implemented at our school. However, inconsistencies and a lack of follow-through have left these times chaotic and undersupervised. All year long, we have not been able to adequately staff the hourly position needed to implement these expectations and procedures. This position offers minimum wage with no pay increase. The job is not only stressful and difficult, but important and has a huge impact on our children's day, and their pay should reflect that. They also need ongoing training and support, so that our children have consistent, structured supervision. I was surprised to learn there are no standards for adult-to-children ratios on the playground. Perhaps the district needs to adopt a policy surrounding playground supervision to ensure the safety of our children, as well as a structured recess program, such as Playworks, for all elementary schools in Tacoma. While volunteering nearly every day, I've given lots of hugs and wiped many tears. It's obvious that many of our children lack the social and emotional skills needed to be successful in school. I commend our principal for recognizing this, and I'm proud that our PTA purchased the second-step curriculum for the grades that did not have it, and we have 11 teachers who have volunteered to be trained and implement this on a weekly basis. The issues I've spoken on today have a significant impact on our children every single day. As parents on the east side, we want you to know that we deeply care about a children's education and the climate that they learn in. We ask you to consider these presented solutions for these ongoing problems. After all, if we expect our kids to work hard for what's important to us, we can't ignore what's important to them. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. That will conclude public comment for the evening. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Item number five is the consent calendar, and there's a lot of content in this item, and at times it may appear that we move rapidly through it, but we have given it careful consideration and had the days leading up to the meeting to ask questions and have information clarified. Do you have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item number six, policy matters.
This is the, can you hear me? This is the first reading of Policy 4405, lobbying activities pursuant to state law. Public agencies in certain situations are allowed to lobby at the state level. These activities must be reported to the Public Disclosure Commission on a quarterly basis. The district currently does not have a policy in place. The Board of Directors would be exempt from this policy pursuant to the law.
Thank you. Any questions or comments at this time from the board? All right, item number seven, quarterly financial update.
Patty Luat, our Director of Finance, is going to give the update.
Good evening, President Heinz, members of the board, Superintendent Santorno and Deputy Superintendent Garcia. I'm pleased to present a financial update regarding the budgeted student FTE. So looking at slide number one, our budgeted annual average FTE enrollment is 26,714. This includes 860 budgeted FTE for full-day kindergarten, which is currently projected to be about 35 FTE above budget. Also, our re-engagement center is also included in this number, and we have about 398 projected FTE in this number. As we're looking at the variants from last year, enrollment is projected to be 322 FTE higher than last year. Next, on slide two, I'd like to talk a little bit about our staffing. Our certificated staffing is 65 FTE below budget, and that is in a combination of areas. And our classified staffing is 58 FTE below budget. So when looking at our comparison to last year-end, we're about 30 FTE certificated staffing increase above that. Classified staffing increased about 3 FTE from last year. Next, on Next, on slide three, our beginning fund balance was 1.1 million above budget. Our revenue is currently projected to be about 2.9 million above budget, and about 406,000 of this is in our local taxes, and our local non-tax is projected to be about 741,000 above budget. Next, looking at our expenditures, we're projected to be 7.9 million below budget. Majority of that, about 3.5 of that, is in our salaries and benefits, and that's due to the unfilled positions or late starts. And our supplies, we're projected to be about 4.9 million below budget, and our ending fund balance is projected to be about 12 million above budget. Looking at the last slide, we began the year 8.7 million in the assigned-for-future operations, and we're currently projected to save about 1.1 million this year. Any questions?
Questions?
I guess I just have one, I just have one about, so we're over, so when you talk about certificated staff, so we have more than what we budgeted for, correct, last year? Is that what you were saying?
Yes.
But we have more, but we have more students, so, you know, we get more money, so it's kind of a wash, correct?
Correct. So, we have to, we have to staff those classrooms. So, the more students we have, the more teachers that we need to staff.
That's right.
For those students.
Yeah, I just wanted to have a clarification on that.
As a relationship.
Because it sounds like we're being irresponsible. But we're not. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, thank you very much. All right, item number eight, curriculum and instruction. You have a report tonight? Item number nine, business matters, construction update.
President Hines, I'm going to yield my seat to Facilities Director Steve Murakami, and following his brief presentation, it'll be a natural segue, I think, for him to read the action items that relate directly to some of the things he'll be covering as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Board President Hines and Board members. With the construction update, I have two pieces that I wanted to cover tonight. The first is Wainwright, our application is into the city of Furcrest for a conditional use permit, and as part of that process, there's an open public comment period. And so, we're in that right now, and we've received some of the initial comments from neighbors immediately adjacent to the development. And so, we've added a community meeting to clarify a few pieces that may have been misunderstood and to explain further with additional graphics and to show the relationship of the building and the site and the trees we're keeping. And so, February, Tuesday, February 24th, at 7 o'clock, at United Methodist Church, we're going to have a public meeting, and so, we'll put that out through our social media channels to encourage people to attend that meeting. And then, the second piece comes from a response. Vice President Viall asked several meetings ago about coming back to the board when we had all these measures and if we're going to continue to come. And so, we thought it would be good to show you a graphic that we prepared a few years ago to show the interactions of the planning and construction efforts as it relates to you, the board. And so, let's see here if I have control of this. Can I have the fancy device? Okay, so, as part of the process, as we interact with OSPI for projects that are eligible for state funding assistance, there are several formalities that you'll see, and you'll see some of those tonight. And then, as we proceed and we no longer have eligibility for match, some of those formalities aren't required. And so, this first slide talks about the, I'm not sure why it started at the end. Let's see if we can get this thing to reset. Might need some technicals. You guys are missing really good stuff right now.
I only have one slide.
We only have one slide. It's supposed to be a multiple advanced slide.
I think so.
It's frozen. So.
Got sick.
Okay. Well, I guess we have a technical difficulty. So, the interactions that we come to you for formalities with OSPI are things like resolutions for non-racial imbalance. Those are statements that by creating a project, we're not going to aggravate racial imbalance across the city of Tacoma, meaning we're not going to give one side of the neighborhood a nice school and another area a lesser school. We'll also be coming to you for, you've seen approvals for value engineering and constructability, architectural selection, and then, there are informal pieces that we come to you for informational purposes, such as presentation of our schematic design, color boards, design development, pieces along the design timeline. And then, at the very end, we come back to you with a final acceptance for contract. So, you'll see a little bit of all of that tonight in the eight items following. Any questions?
Director Wenskill. I have a really general question that
Sure.
may not even pertain to either of these things, but in the past, I've heard us talk about historic buildings, and I know in Washington, they wanted to go back to the old colors and replicate what was there. You know, maybe the colors were really ugly, so I want you to consider that with Stewart and MacArthur, that maybe we don't want to have some of those color, mustard yellow and orange and things like that. So, I give you absolution on the final product if it isn't a very attractive product.
Not sure how to respond to that. We will be presenting color boards for your review, and there are colors that are integral to finishes that will never change, and so, those are, we take a more timeless approach to make sure that we're not being trendy. We may be a little trendy with paint colors, but that's something that we can change easily. So, we try to stay current, celebrate the past, and make an inviting environment for our students.
Yeah, so I know this is early on, but I just want to see that, so when you bring them and I say, oh.
Thank you.
You'll know.
I will take that.
Okay.
I just need a clar-
Director Miller.
Need a clarification. You're bringing color boards to the board for approval?
We present, well, we present them.
I see Sammy going, no.
No.
Okay.
So, informational purposes, that's one of the pieces that if my slide had worked. Pieces above the line were formal requirements requiring board action. Items below the line were for information. So, you'll see us, like at Washington, for Washington, we set up color boards at the back of the room to invite public comment, to show you all the proposed palette, so.
Okay, thank you. Vice President Viall.
I would hope, oh, that, following up a little bit on what Director Wenskill said, if we see some stuff that we feel that the community isn't going to be happy with, i.e. Wilson High School's original colors, later that the board will have an opportunity to-
Is Dan still here? Okay.
To original, when the, you know, when the school was, the first stage was done, the community was pretty unhappy afterwards, and that the board, I was told, was not aware of what that was going to look like, you know, industrial-type colors in a residential neighborhood. So, that I hope that, you know, we will be, have the opportunity, we don't necessarily have to approve, but we will have also opportunity to comment on whether or not, you know, we feel that perhaps some of those color schemes do not particularly fit
Sure.
neighborhood or do not hold with the historic character perhaps of some of our buildings.
We will continue with the practice of presenting those and-
Okay, that's what I, I wanted to make sure that you did, and I know that you have been very good about taking our comments under consideration, and the architects do. Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so let's move into item 9A, approval of educational specifications for the modernization at MacArthur Elementary School.
The Executive Director of Facilities recommends that the Board of Directors approve the educational specifications for the MacArthur Elementary School project.
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? I have a question that I was going to reserve until the end, but this may be a more appropriate time, particularly given the public comment around the library. Would you explain how that, at what point does a decision need to be made definitively?
Sure. So, as presented last time with our board study session, we are going, we're undertaking a process of community asset mapping, every neighborhood, every project, and looking at what's deficient, what are the successes that we can build on. And from the get-go, we knew that the Hilltop services in the library arena were diminished. And so, the conversation has always been around, how can we create, since we are already going to the effort of creating a great library space, what would it take to make it a public space, too? And so, we're putting in infrastructure that allow MacArthur Square, the heart of the school, the library, to be zoned off in a way that it can, we can look at future use or, as soon as it opens, use for as a public space during the weeknights and weekends. There's operational concerns and budgetary pieces that haven't been figured out, but with the capital dollars, we are making the investment so that that can happen, and with all of our facilities, we're looking at making them to maximize the community asset, so that the gymnasium at MacArthur, that 6,000-square-foot gym that we would never build for an elementary, we're keeping, because it's a appreciated community asset. The library, I'm hoping, can be one of those pieces.
And would the library, how, if we were to partner with the city on a public library, would that impact the library services within the school?
We haven't figured out all of those pieces yet. Obviously, there's issues of access to the building, keeping the public-public and the private-private, which we're handling with through the architecture. The content in the library is something that we could discuss, as every library evolving, it's the question, what is the library of the future, and what kind of books are we equipping it? What kind of technology are we equipping it with? There is an item that we need to figure out in the future with theft prevention, which is an issue, but can be handled through technology and hardware, not necessarily part of the architecture itself. So, there's pieces that we're putting in place that will support it, but it doesn't have all the solutions in terms of operational means of how we're actually going to do it or fund it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Superintendent.
Steve, so I'm assuming that next steps, that we're going to move very carefully regarding, you know, the pros and cons of a library, and that the board will have adequate time to really weigh in, because that's a huge decision.
Sure.
And your work with the city so far, have you had work-
It's been aspirational.
Okay.
We've been meeting with Susan Odenkrantz,
Okay.
Al Nurse, and Amanda Scott Thomas and I have been communicating through email, talking about options. So, we're going to continue that endeavor. I'm pretty confident that the architecture and the pieces that we're putting in play can set up this environment to happen. It's just now the funding mechanism and the operationalizing of it is the piece that we need to figure out.
All right, great.
All right, thank you. All right, so the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item 9B, approval of Resolution Number 1981, certifying that renovating MacArthur Elementary School will not create or aggravate a racial imbalance.
The Executive Director of Facilities recommends that the Board of Directors approve Resolution Number 1981, certifying that the construction of a renovated MacArthur Elementary School on the MacArthur Elementary School site will not create or aggravate racial imbalance.
I move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item 9C, approval of educational specifications for the remodel and additions at Stewart Middle School.
The Executive Director of Facilities recommends that the Board of Directors approve the educational specifications for the Stewart Middle School project.
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question from the last presentation that we had on Stewart, and that is the movable seats inside the auditorium, which is going to also be like the commons. And I'm really kind of concerned about what that would be like, if those are going to work and if it's going to fit into the school. So, I don't know, I'm a little bit concerned about that. Sounds a little bit strange.
It's actually a really widely-used technology that's been around for a long time. In 15 years of practicing on the architectural side before, we used it up and down across Washington. It's a nationally-used platform where it's a bleacher platform that's driven by a very small motor, half horsepower, very easy to extend, offers flexibility in that you can provide a chair platform for seating, and within minutes, close it up and allow, it's no different than the bleachers we put in our gymnasiums, other than the fact that you can provide chair seating. And so, if you go to Wilson or Stadium or Lincoln, we have electronically-controlled bleachers. This is the same technology.
Okay, so I wouldn't mind seeing some, besides the high school, you know, maybe you could tell me later of a school I could go visit or something.
Of course.
We can help arrange for a trip. There's, neighboring districts have them and have used them effectively, so it may help get a more of a visual of what they look and feel like.
Yeah, that'd be good.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item 9D, approval of Resolution Number 1982, certifying that renovating a Stewart Middle School will not create or aggravate a racial imbalance.
The Executive Director of Facilities recommends that the Board of Directors approve Resolution Number 1982, certifying that the construction of a renovated Stewart Middle School on the Stewart Middle School site will not create or aggravate racial imbalance.
I move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item 9E, approval of educational specifications for the new, well, it says in lieu at Wainwright, easy for me to say, intermediate school. I'm assuming that's a typo.
Actually, new in lieu is a OSPI funding terminology.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, it is.
We're building-
Of course it is.
We're building a new facility in lieu of renovating the existing.
Okay.
So, the Executive Director of Facilities recommends that the Board of Directors approve the educational specifications for the Wainwright Intermediate School.
Remove approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item 9F, approval of Resolution Number 1983, certifying that the new in lieu of Wainwright Intermediate School will not create or aggravate a racial imbalance.
The Executive Director of Facilities recommends that the Board of Directors approve Resolution Number 1983, certifying that the construction of the new in lieu Wainwright Intermediate School on the Wainwright Elementary School site will not create or aggravate racial imbalance.
Remove approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item 9G, approval of contract between Tacoma School District Number 10 and Neely Construction and Cabinet Company on the Foss restroom renovation project.
The Executive Director of Facilities recommends that the Board of Directors approve the acceptance of contract for Neely Construction and Cabinet Company for the Foss High School restroom renovation project.
I move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Vice President Viall.
Thank you. Did we not approve another one of these a week or two ago?
There were several projects at Foss with the fields renovation project, the front entry project.
Specifically for the bathroom.
Uh, no, this is the first. This is the closing out of the contract.
Okay, so this is the final, no more punch lists, no more
Correct.
change orders. Okay, great.
Hopefully, you guys have seen it. It's a beautiful.
Yeah, it is. I saw it last weekend at the Narrows League Wrestling Tournament. It looks good.
It's a really nice facility.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Item 9H, approval of Resolution Number 1984, certifying that the district intends to comply with RCW 39.10, alternative public works contracting procedures for the MacArthur Elementary School and Stewart Middle School modernization projects.
The Executive Director of Facilities recommends that the Board of Directors adopt Resolution Number 1984, certifying that the district intends to comply with RCW 39.10, alternative public works contracting procedures for the MacArthur Elementary School and Stewart Middle School modernization projects.
Move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments?
Director Hines.
Vice President Viall.
Mr. Murakami, could you explain for those, for people who are watching what that means? It doesn't mean we're circumventing or going around or not following procedures, because I know someone might infer that, so could you explain what that means briefly, please?
For the majority of our construction projects, we're required to go through a design, bid, build process, where the low bidder, day of bid, is awarded the contract for construction. As we brought the projects to you in the past and showed you the conceptual and schematic designs, we indicated that we were given permission by the state to do an alternative process for bidding, and so, we did the GCCM, which is the General Contractor-as-Construction Manager process, similar to stadium and other projects. This is a process that brings the general contractor on board from the get-go and brings them in as a partner. And so, we've been doing a lot more of exploratory demolition before bid. We're looking at really understanding the unknowns of these historic buildings, so that there aren't as many surprises during construction. And the bidding that's going to now occur is all the bidding of all the subcontractor packages, which the general contractor is working with the architects and the school district to define and to bid.
Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
All right, any additional questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Opposed? Motion carries five zero. And before we move on to the next item on the agenda, Superintendent Santorno has requested a few minutes.
I just wanted to take this opportunity. We're not, we're not sure that Mr. Sam Bell will be here at our next, our final meeting in February. Many of you may not know that he has submitted his retirement. And on the 19th, which is the study session next week, we'll have to discuss about whether we're going to have that study session, but we are going to have the party for Sam next week. And Sam has been delightful to work for, to work with, work for. And we have, you know, we certainly will honor him at that celebration on the 19th. But let's take an opportunity really to talk, to celebrate Sam's 16 years at Tacoma Public Schools. He's made an incredible difference. Thank you, Sam. Thanks, Sam.
Sam, thank you so much for your service. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you, Sam.
And hit that ball straight in retirement.
Thank you very much. Now, just 30 seconds of, of words from the heart. It has been a real joy, many challenges along the way, lots of rewards. I have truly enjoyed working with the community members of Tacoma, the students, staff, the board of directors. And I look forward to retirement. A couple of people have reached out and tried to twist my arm otherwise, but I'm saying right now, I'm looking forward to retirement. So thank you all very much. It's, I really appreciate it very much.
What's our first tea time?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Item number 10, other business. 10A, introduction of renaming of the 1818 Tacoma Avenue Building.
Sorry, my computer froze up and I'm still having trouble getting to all the right places. This is the first reading of a proposal to rename the 1818 Avenue Building. As identified in the recommendation, there is a concurrent proposal to rename the educational program that is at the 1818 Avenue Building, which is the re-engagement center. The 1818 Tacoma Avenue itself has never had a formal name. And so that is what the proposal is.
The background is the superintendent has received a proposal for a name change for the 1818 Tacoma Avenue Building that houses the re-engagement center, as well as to change the re-engagement center program name. Naming is addressed in the following school board policy 6970 and regulation 6970R. The board must approve the building name change while the superintendent has the ability to change the name of the program. The 1818 Tacoma Avenue Building has been used by various programs, but it has no formal name other than its address. As eight, as the 1818 Tacoma Avenue Building has no official name and has, because the superintendent believes that the program name and the building name should be the same, the superintendent is recommending that the building name change and be considered by the board concurrently with her considering a program name change.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Director Wensko.
It used to be called Region Five Learning Center.
Yeah, it was.
It did happen.
It was never actually named that. I had a fun archival visit trying to figure that out.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. We'll move on to item 10B, the first reading of the innovative secondary school in South or East Tacoma, RFP.
Do you want me to read the background piece? Is that the part that I read out loud or? I don't, I don't have anything but the background and the current consideration.
That's good.
Background?
Consideration.
Okay, the current consideration. This RFP contains the instructions governing the proposal to be submitted by interested proposers. The district invites proposals for a small innovative secondary school, grades six through 12, that will expand on existing learning opportunities within the district. Recommendation, no action required, first reading only.
Right, any questions or comments?
For those that are home, the actual RFP is linked to the agenda item so they could get more details for those that would be interested in potentially applying.
Okay, and this is, so last week, we met in a study session to consider the RFP. This is driven by a policy that we adopted as a board about a year ago. And this is our first time working through the process. And that policy, it stipulates that in January of every year, we consider an RFP process that would commence in February. Director Wensko, did you have questions?
So is this about a direct proposal then?
This is, would be your request for proposals. So this would be the first reading and then so this meets what we heard your request to provide some public comment. And so tentatively, we'd be scheduled for the 26th to, if you choose to adopt the RFP that is presented to you, or you could make modifications and adjustments to that RFP.
So I was just unclear when you said six through 12. So, okay. I got it.
Director Oshka.
And I just want to clarify, as this board knows, but for those that are maybe watching, that this policy and this process is about making sure that we have a clear and identified way for ideas to come to us because we think that our community has great ideas also, so that we can ensure that we're doing innovation well and hearing our community.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, we'll move on to item 11, report to the board. I believe we're going to receive a report from Assistant Superintendent Pace on graduation rates.
Just a little bit of quick background of, we have publicly released and celebrated our graduation rates, but we haven't actually brought you the monitoring report yet. And we were waiting towards the fifth year extended graduation rates, which was also one of your approved benchmarks, until that data was released from OSPI and the data had become official from OSPI before actually receiving the official monitoring report. So tonight, we have Dr. Doug Hosted or an Assistant Superintendent, Tony Pace, here to present to you the monitoring report. And then we'll get back on schedule with our regular monitoring reports and bring you academic excellence, which will have more components to you on, I think, the 26th it's scheduled.
Right, the academic excellence will be on February 26th.
So we apologize for being a little bit out, but the timing of announcements as well as OSPI's finalization of the dates brought us here to tonight.
So, thank you and a good evening. And we'll move fairly quickly through this. I want to thank Doug Hosted for helping put this PowerPoint together and, and organizing the, the data for us to, to this evening. So we're looking at the, the goal of academic excellence and the benchmark of, of monitoring the graduation. Actually, the, the goal states that all students perform at or above grade level and we will eliminate disparities among all groups of students. And we are determining these disparities through the data that is broken out by the following groups: ethnicity, poverty, which is identified as free and reduced lunch, and gender, region, ELL, and special education. So I'm going to turn this over now to Dr. Hosted, who's going to take us through some of this data.
Yeah, thank you, Tony. Okay, so we're going, we kind of broke this up into the four-year adjusted cohort, and we'll have some data around that, and then we'll look at the five-year extended cohort. So you look at the four-year adjusted rates, and you can see in 2013, we were slightly above 70%. And then 2014, we jumped to 78%. And so we were all at the graduate Tacoma celebration this morning. And Superintendent Santorno mentioned, I can't remember the exact adjectives, but big, audacious, hairy goals. And so, kind of after Jim Collins. And so the school district set a big, audacious, hairy goal of 20, by 2020, 85% of our students will graduate. Looking at the data from 2014, that goal doesn't seem so hairy, which is a example of the hard work of the staff here at Tacoma and your leadership to move our graduations as far as we have in as short a time as we have. So it's, it's a big celebration, to be sure. So this slide compares, just to kind of give you perspective, compares the four-year cohort rate, which is the blue bar, and the adjusted five-year extended graduation rate, which is, I guess, the orange bar. And so as you look at these numbers, you can see the blue bar goes up each year. So our graduation rate for the four-year cohort has increased. The orange bar, you can see, is a little more dicey in that when you look at 2000 and, I'll take the middle one, 2013, for example, the number there says 67. Well, that is inclusive of the students who graduated the year prior, which is 2011. So when you look at this graph, you're look, really, when you go from 2011 to 2012, you're going from blue to orange, if that makes sense, because the students who graduated in 2011 are now categorized as extended grads in 2012. I see quizzical looks. Okay, we'll go on. Well, hopefully be able to explain it better.
Here's a quick way to look at it. So the orange bar is always one year behind. So when you look at, starting from 2014, the orange bar actually represents the 2013 graduating class in their extended year.
That makes sense. I was hearing it as combination. I knew that wasn't true looking at the, at the bar, so.
Thank you, Dr. Garcia.
Is that our formula or is that OSPI?
All graduation required, rates are calculated by the same formula across the state as determined by OSPI, both four-year and five-year graduation rates.
Okay, so here's the four-year adjusted cohort by ethnicity. Again, this pattern is the same. You have the blue bar for 2013, the orange bar for 2014. And it's fantastic to see that in each subgroup, the bar has increased from 2013 to 2014. Now here we look at poverty. So these students are qualified for free and reduced lunch. And again, from 2013 to 14, you can see the green bar, which are the, which is the graduation number, is increased. And then the orange represents-
Continuing.
Continuing, and the blue is the dropout. Now we do it by genders. You look at female. Again, the female grad rate is increased. It's about 80, a little over 80% for 2014. And then the male, you can see, also increased. And the males are not graduating at quite the rate that our females are. ELL, again, positive news. The green bar goes up from 13 to 14. So our graduation rate for our ELL students has increased. Same for our special education students. And if you look at the four-year adjusted cohort by school, again, the trend is very positive. For in every school, the orange bar of 2014 is higher than the blue bar representing 2013. Now, when you get to school, to our Sammy and Soda, it's a little harder because they're at the ceiling almost already, but even they show a gain in graduation from 13 to 14. And so now breaking it down into the five-year extended graduation rate, like Dr. Garcia said, these students are a class behind. So when you look at the extended grad rate of 2014, that includes the continuing students from the prior year of 2013. So here we have five-year extended graduation rates by ethnicity. In almost all areas, you can see the rate increasing. And of course, some of the big drops have to do with the number of students in the sample. Five-year extended graduation, graduation rates by free and reduced lunch or students of poverty, again, you can see a positive trend from 2013 to 14. Same with males from up to 2000, up to 70, a little over 75% for 2014. Females outperform in the males a little bit in the extended grad rate, no surprise. ELL increased from 13 to 14. Special education, a slight increase from 13 to 14, but moving in the, in the positive direction. And then if you look at the extended grad rate by school, again, you see a consistent positive trend that if not increasing, certainly remaining very, you know, not decreasing by much at all. So again, a positive trend, even looking at the five-year extended grad rate.
So we, we came up with some key data findings from the, the data as we looked closely at it. Obviously, the Tacoma Public Schools' graduation rates have increased over time. Of those who did not graduate on time, approximately 7% remained enrolled. All the graduation rates for ethnic groups increased. Students of poverty, ELL, and special ed still lag behind peers, both in four-year cohort data as well as an extended year, even though they did see increases within their own groups. All high schools have made graduation progress over the last two years.
And so when you look at action, you know, what's happening in our schools today, I don't believe I have to go read every bullet, but you can see the many things. And I tried to include examples of our community partners and their work in our schools that our high schools are doing each and every day, each and every week. It's really exciting to see the number of opportunities afforded to our students who need those opportunities to stay after school and get help, not only from school staff, but from community members who are part of those community partners.
And there's lots of choices for students as you look through that list. There's online options, there's before and after-school opportunities, lunch tutoring, so lots of different options for students to choose from.
And again, just continuing the list, you can see our community, community partners there, use of technology for communication, communication from principals to staff and parents. I, I know at high, at one high school, the principal has a Sunday phone message to all his parents, kind of with what's happening in terms of what, what's happening at his school. And this little graph we just threw in there to show you a comparison, this is the senior failure rates. Since this is a graduation presentation, I just focus in on the seniors. But last year, 6.79% at the end of semester one were failing a class. This year, it's down by a percent and a half, which when you talk about, it doesn't look like a lot when you look at it by percentages, but that's quite a few students, fewer students that are failing this year.
You go ahead.
Okay, so the next steps, a lot of our schools during waiver day had discussions on analyzing student grades and failure rates. Our IT department has done a great job with providing our schools data, and our principals are sharing that data with their staff, and they're having real, authentic conversations about what that data is telling them and how they can respond to that data. They're looking at instructional strategies. Assistant Superintendent Pace mentioned use of technology. That's what Edgenuity is, it's software. And Apex, both are being used. Extended learning opportunities could include teachers allowing students to make up work or retake tests that they didn't perform well on first semester, and they're giving them an opportunity to show proficiency at certain standards, even though it's late. And so that's what the create extended learning opportunities means. And it also means having after-school opportunities for students. So it's both things, kind of allowing them to fulfill their obligations from first semester that they didn't fulfill, and also providing them opportunities for tutoring and whatnot when the school day ends or when the final bell rings.
We just wanted to remind our viewing audience that we do have feedback surveys on, on their website and to be sure to list any concerns or questions that they may have using that, that, that option. There's the feedback button. Questions?
Just one other quick reminder that this class, the class of 2015, has a different graduation requirements than the class of 2014. different graduation requirements than the class of two thousand and fourteen, the class of two thousand and thirteen, or the class of two thousand and twelve. Um, that makes it difficult for staff as well. It makes it difficult for families when you talk across the neigh- the fence and you're, there's something new. One of those additional requirements is the, uh, end-of-course biology exam. And that is a new requirement for our kids and our students. Uh, it's a new requirement for our staff. And there are very limited opportunities for students to demonstrate proficiency on the end-of-course biology exam. So one example is, is at the end of the semester, you can take the end-of-course biology exam. And then you're able to follow that up with a collection of evidence. So when you think about where it is, uh, we just had the end of the semester. We don't know what the results are yet. So we're, every day, we waste, we, uh, we, we, we give our cha- students chances, less chance to demonstrate their proficiency on things like the collection of evidence. Um, we know that the test shouldn't be the only way to proficient, demonstrate that proficiency. So, uh, we anticipate that that's going to be a continued challenge throughout the spring.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Director Eschka.
Thank you. Um, I'm sure I've heard this before, but for clarity, when I see the word dropout, I think, uh, what, how specifically is that defined by O S P I? Period of time out of school or they've actually formally withdrawn?
Yeah, they either, they either for- formally withdrew or have been withdrawn for lack of attendance. And so they're no longer in our school system.
Okay, and at what point at T P S for lack of attendance do we withdraw students?
Twenty consecutive days.
Okay.
And that's a, that's a state, yeah.
Yeah, I know that we do a lot of outreach. I want to make, um, point one thing out whenever I look at these slides. Um, in terms of Oakland, it always looks like they have a really low graduation rate. And most of the students that come to Oakland are coming as, um, uh, they're already past the ability to graduate four years on time. So I want to make sure that I acknowledge that because the teachers and the staff at Oakland kind of do double and triple time. Um, and I, and I want to honor that. I have a, a little soapbox that I like to get on about the word poverty. Um, I feel that the word poverty is something that in this country is charged with, um, uh, with meaning that indicates that people lack moral or intellectual ability. And I would like us to remove it as much as possible. And it's not the first time I've said it from here, and I'll say it every single time. Ones I would put instead, or maybe economically challenged, I was looking at your slide, and I do do communications for a living. That could have been long, but even if you just said free and reduced lunch, yes, that would work. Unless, of course, you're trying to imply that, um, they are of lesser moral or intellectual character. I don't think that you are.
No.
But that's what I hear when you say that, so.
Thank you.
I'm going to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Everything else looks great. I'm really excited to have reports and positive upward trends. Um, I, and I'm sorry, I'm going to ramble for a slight minute. Uh, when I first came to this board, we didn't have, uh, goals. We didn't have regular reports. There were things that we talked about, uh, kind of in a, uh, a hope way. And now it's a regular routine thing that we do throughout the district, and we're leaders in Washington for that. And I just appreciate all the effort that goes into that because it's very, very important.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Just.
Vice President Viall.
Just keep up the good work. I mean, it's, it's amazing, um, from when I first came on the board three years ago to now. Or, I know tonight we heard that perhaps data isn't important. I think we know that the collection and the use of data in determining and helping our kids achieve success is important when we look at where we were in two thousand and ten at a fifty-five percent graduation rate. And we're now, you know, at well above seventy-eight without those abilities to know what kids need help. And that's the opportunities that we do now have with our data to know that before, two weeks before graduation, that these child, children are credit deficient or that they are. I'm particularly, um, impressed with our ability to now pick up the kids that are failing a class very, very quickly.
Yes.
So that hopefully the kids that are now in the ninth grade and as we begin to cor- correct that, we will see that also get us closer and closer and that we will make that, uh, target of eighty-five percent in two thousand and twenty. Anyway, I know what amazing work our staff has done. And I think sometimes we sit up here now and are beginning to take for granted what our teachers and our administrators, our staff, everybody out in our building, and I, and I want people to know that how much we as a board do appreciate that. And we do not take it for granted. And thank you for your hard work, both of you.
Thank you, Director Viall.
Thank you.
Uh, I would echo those sentiments and just add that I think graduation rate, uh, when we talk about kids being more than just a test score and why we're so emphatic that multiple measures is the way to, uh, to gauge student learning. The, the number of things that have to be accomplished in order for a student to be handed that diploma, I think there's a pretty good indicator of what's going on, and it's a community-wide effort. And as we heard this morning, all five of us were at the foundations event. Uh, these remarkable gains that are being made, uh, and it's a collaborative effect. It's not just the, the hard work that's happening on a daily basis under the leadership of Superintendent Santorno and Dr. Garcia. Uh, it's the community partnerships. It's extending the day and the year through community partnerships. It's a city that has embraced this goal of graduating eighty-five percent of our kids by two thousand and twenty and then resetting that goal and continuing to climb the ladder. And I just appreciate, uh, this morning, I felt a lot of pride in our city uh, because that's not the case, uh, throughout the state and around the country, where folks understand. Someone was sharing with me, you have this, um, uncanny ability in the city for people to understand their role and responsibility, and they feel a sense of obligation to fulfill it. So thank you for the leadership and the good work, and, uh, we'll just continue to charge every student every day. And that one point five percent, those are real kids. Those are real kids. So it, it's easy to sit up here sometimes and look at information in the aggregate and, and to dismiss one point five percent. But when we stop to name every child and we put a face on those kids, that's really meaningful work. So thank you very much. It's, it's really appreciated. All right, we'll move on to, uh, item number twelve. And that's my item, and I'm going to pass out a document. So for our, uh, consideration, thinking about, uh, how we're organized as a board and specifically our committees. Uh, so we have been, uh, focused on providing direction to the superintendent to organize the district around the strategic plan and the benchmarks. And we almost broke Roslin last year with budgeting by priorities. But we've just continued to really drive strategic plan and benchmarks. And so I think it may be, uh, an opportunity for us to, uh, lead by example and, and reconsider how we're organized and, and look at our committee structure in the context of how could we be better organized around the strategic plan, those four goals and the benchmarks. So what you have before you is a, uh, a suggested reorg. The numbers, it could have easily have been A, B, C, D. It, it does not correlate to any sort of, uh, position that we hold when we go out and run. It's, it's not correlated to the position that you have been elected to serve. It's not any sort of a pecking order. It's just a way to distinguish between the five of us. Uh, and this was put together, uh, I asked Superintendent Santorno and Deputy Superintendent Garcia uh, to help us flesh this out. And Director Viall and I met and walked through it, and we're interested in your feedback. Uh, and certainly not looking for any sort of definitive decision today. Uh, but just a general sense of, uh, your reaction to this. Uh, as we were looking at current committee assignments, we have, um, kind of arbitrary membership. We have someone that is a liaison to the P T A, but not necessarily to any other community partners. And yet we have partnerships as one of our four goals. So, uh, would it be of benefit to have a committee that is community partners, uh, partnerships that then could work in conjunction with, uh, staff and be the conduit back to the board? So when we do board reports, we talk about, uh, the work of that particular committee, relevant information to that committee. And it is a, uh, a, a better reflection of the work that's going on. Uh, i- if this is something we're interested in pursuing, uh, then perhaps we want a study session or a retreat time to work through this. Uh, but as I said, this, uh, tonight really was intended to gauge your first blush reaction to this idea of, of organizing ourselves the way that we've asked our superintendent to organize the district. Director Eschka.
I'm totally interested in the dialogue. I can't say that I understand your chart completely.
Okay.
Um, and I don't know if you would want to have that discussion now or look at this and have that discussion at another time?
If I may, I, I'd like to have another time because I'm confused also.
Okay.
And so maybe it's a good time to kind of just kick back a little bit, look at it.
Sure. Some questions that I have that would help to have the information so that I would be less confused.
Okay.
Um, is that, as you said, that things could be A, B, C, or D. Couple of them say president. And kind of defining what those things are if they're not existing things. You've got parentheses in places, and I'm not sure why they're there.
What's going on?
So if there's, I don't know, we're overhearing a radio someplace.
Oh, okay.
I think we're safe.
We don't need to evacuate.
But if we could just get a little bit more clarification on, on what that means. Uh, this clearly looks like there was some good thought mapping going on, and I, and I get that, so I appreciate the effort. And I look forward that to the discussion and just more information so I can really understand where you're coming from before I get your response.
Okay.
Maybe we are back.
Vice President Viall.
Maybe we should schedule a s- study session or a time when we have a lighter agenda in the next couple of weeks. And, and perhaps Director Heinz and I, um, can get with, uh, Deputy Superintendent Santorno and write a little bit of a narrative to go with this. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, or a verbal presentation, either way.
Whatever. In terms of our, our thinking, I just, um, echo what President Heinz said was to align our board committees with what we're doing in the strategic plan. And our thought was, uh, is that these committee chair, uh, opportunities would just rotate every year so that while you were on the board, you would opportunity to chair the early learning, to chair the academic excellence, the partnerships, the safety, so that we all became, uh, very familiar as we served on the board with we, with what we're actually doing and give, uh, everybody an opportunity to broaden out our knowledge in, uh, in all of the areas that we work in as a board.
Looking forward to that discussion.
We're going to meet again.
All right, sounds good. All right, uh, so we move on to announcements of future board meeting. We, uh...
Board comment, board comments.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Uh, board comments or reports, and we'll start with our student representative. Put you on the spot. Or we can end with our student representative.
I always go first.
Please.
Lincoln is doing very well. Um, I think all the high schools are. Everybody is getting, well, I'm a senior, so I'm really focused on the seniors. Um, props to Mount T for having more acceptance letters than Lincoln, but we're getting there. Um, yep, just everybody's doing what they need to do. We have great people that are helping out with everything. We just went through our, uh, we just ended first semester, so now we're in second semester, which is, I think you all know, the first week of second semester is where our counselors go crazy because they have these kids in their office. So they finally figured it, everything out. So everything is going great.
Great, thank you. Director Miller.
Uh, the Graduate Tacoma has been mentioned ver- many times tonight, and it was a great, uh, event. And once again, I thought Carla wowed the crowd. And, um, and even, uh, Dr. Garcia was mentioned in the same breath. So every once in a while, he's got to get his kudos, you know? So, uh, once again, a great event, um, and, uh, good work by everybody.
Director Wensko.
Okay, so, um, I, I'd like to make a couple of comments about the, um, smarter balance test. And we all know that this is a law put in by the legislature and that we are obligated to give that test. And we really, I, I think we'd be hard pressed to, um, say that we're not going to give it to our, uh, students. I think when, um, i- if the reality of the sixty percent failure rate, uh, materializes, then there's another story there. But I, I am, I have listened to some of the concerns of some of the people who want to opt out. Um, and when I look at the test and I see that there's no way for the people to know that second, in the next year, what the students did, so there's no reflection from the students or from their parents about what they, um, are maybe deficient in. And that the teachers can't really look at it to see how to he- help the next class, the, the, the previous class because they've already, are done. Then there's students in the next class. They don't know, the teachers don't know. So really, what is the point of the test? I mean, I think we should have that kind of discussion later. And maybe with, uh, Pat Cummings, maybe we should invite Joe Wilhoff to come and, uh, actually talk to us. So if, um, I think that we really need to look at what happens with this whole testing, um, situation coming up. It's going to be, take most of the month of May. Um, it's going to hurt, um, uh, classroom time for our students. I think we need to look at and talk to our high school principals especially. And then talk to our legislators when it's all over and say, here is what happened this year. And then look at the test scores and ask them, you know, what is your intent? What was the intent in this, uh, law? Um, and because they're the ones that are telling us what to do. I have, uh, gone to a lot of, uh, conferences over the years. And one of the things that I hear from businesses all the time, like Google and some of the other, um, very, uh, productive companies, is that they give a lot of time for their people, like twenty percent of their time, to come up with innovative ideas. And we have structured, the schools are so structured that there's no time for the teachers to do anything other than what is prescribed. And I think I'd like to look into, how can we do a certain amount of time where teachers can do their favorite thing that probably will help their students, that will energize them, the teachers and the students both? And I think our teachers need energizing right now. So I'd just like to bring that up for a later discussion.
Okay, thank you. Director Eschka.
Thank you. Um, a couple of comments and... And a closer microphone? Uh, I just have to point out when we're talking about our buildings and everything else, the app, asset mark, mapping and the community input and everything else, we do buildings better than anybody in Pierce County.
The state of Washington.
In the state of Washington. Uh, there's, there's some other building projects going on around the county, and, and there's been some, uh, I've had some, uh, some very close perspectives on how they do, um, input, and I'm not going to call anybody out. But I did cite during some of those conversations that maybe they would, could, maybe we could help them out and how to do that better. I just really appreciate it. I think it's, it's so valuable because it is taxpayers' dollars and getting their ideas on everything, including the color of the paint, um, is, is awesome. So, uh, appreciate that. Um, I also want to point out or discuss, I don't know. Uh, last Saturday, there was a hate crime in the city of Tacoma, and I immediately was, uh, very concerned for our L G B Q T T youth who, uh, up until this time that I know of in Tacoma, I've never had to worry about, uh, being in danger while walking down the street and being themselves. Um, definitely a precarious situation anyway because our culture is not completely, um, okay with it. Uh, there's an irony because just two, three days before, we were voted the most gay-friendly city in Washington by Advocate Magazine. So, uh, myself and several other community leaders, including, uh, Marty Campbell on City Council and, uh, Ryan Mello and Lori Jenkins got together and put together the community conversation with, uh, the Rainbow Center on Saturday from ten to two. The point is, and the objective is, is to make sure that people have a place for dialogue and that we can stand together as a community to show our support and allyship. And I would hope, uh, I was thinking about this while I was at the Graduate Tacoma thing today. When we stand together, we can move mountains, and it's pretty powerful stuff. And I hope that when we have bad things happen, we stand together to say that that's not okay. Not in my family, not in my community, not in my city, not in my schools. It's important to our kids to know that, um, as well as for our adults. So I would also welcome everybody to join us. And we can go from there. I think that we have opportunities for stronger allies across, uh, groups and neighborhoods in the city of Tacoma. Lastly, tomorrow is J Mac. Um, all the CEOs are meeting or presenting for the quarterly meeting. Uh, the topic is economic development. I expect that to be a rich and exciting meeting, and we'll be looking for what ways we can leverage one another's, uh, resources for the greatest good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice President Viall.
I would just like to comment on, on Director Eschka's comments about the hate crime. This community came together just about twenty-five years ago right now to deal with a rash of hate crimes. And that's one of the reasons why we thought we were safe. We enacted lots of things and went on. But unfortunately, I think we came, became silent and complacent about letting people know what kind of a community we are. And I know that Tacoma, Tacomans will come together again. We had the first hate crimes task force in the country in nineteen ninety, and it was chaired by that time, at that time, by a young, recent graduate of the University of Utah Sound Law School, Representative, now Representative Lori Jenkins. And so if anybody is available on that, on that, on Saturday, I ask you to come and let people in this community know that in Tacoma, that's not acceptable. It never has been, and it will not continue to be so. So I intend to be there, and I hope that some of the rest of our colleagues here in the school district and people watching will be there also. the school district and people watching will be there also, because, you know, that's what makes us, we saw this morning, when people come together in this community in a positive way, it's one of the things over the years that has made Tacoma this great city that it is to live in, because we do care about everybody, and I'm sorry if I get a little bit on a soapbox, because I happen to have been the mayor at that time who appointed that committee, and when I see things go backwards, I do not care for it. So I hope that we show up on Saturday to support our children in our community, and adults, and anyone in this community who feels bullied or picked on, it's not acceptable. Thank you. And the other thing is that on Saturday, we hosted the Narrows League Wrestling Championships, and Lincoln High School won them, wherein that was their second time, their wrestling program is probably now becoming one of the best in the state, that goes with their football and basketball, and so anyway, congratulations to the Lincoln Abes, and several of the wrestlers happen to have been former students of mine, and Joelle knows a number of them, I know, so thank you.
Director Eschka?
Just a quick update, I've heard in the media, a couple of places, this community conversation being referred to as a forum, and of course, Director Viall did not do that, it's not a forum, there'll be some people that do some introductory remarks, but the idea is to have a conversation and a dialogue, and to share resources, and to look for solutions and gaps, so just so that you know, it's not a sit and listen, it's a come and engage. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the schedule. We are scheduled for a study session next Thursday, however, Superintendent.
Sorry, so we looked at, you know, one of the things that we've said is that we'd really like to have our study sessions brought around a question and some information, we, I scheduled, we scheduled a nursing report on the 19th, which really isn't a study session topic, Kurt Miller had asked us to give some very specific information about what's going on with our nursing services. Elizabeth Goldberg has put together a great presentation, but it really isn't a study session, we can do it in a regular board meeting, so we have two choices, we can, I hate to give somebody a study session next week with such late notice, it might be hard for them to put something together, so that means we could have Sam's party and then leave, or, or we can have a study session, we'll make Steve do it. But if there is a topic, I'm just making that up, sorry, Steve, if there is a topic that, you know, you would like us to put together for the 19th, we can do that. I think it's important for the public to know that the study sessions are on record when we need them, it doesn't mean that, you know, we have to have one every week, so it's up to the board, I wait for your direction.
I may speak? I don't think we really need one for next week, since it's short notice, but I would love to have a study session on truancy, I don't think that's been discussed in a long time, and I'd like to party down with Sam, but he's already gone. Oh, there he is.
He's back there, he's hiding out.
Director Miller, I do want to let you know that we have done recent restructuring of the truancy office, and that is something I'm happy to speak to the board about.
I knew that, and that's why I'm asking.
All right, so is there consensus to cancel the study session for the 19th?
Aye.
Aye.
No, we can't vote.
We can't vote. I'll be in Baltimore, I'll be in Baltimore, so whether or not you meet is not as relevant to me, except that if you meet without me, I have to go back and watch the tapes, and I would, don't do that.
So I saw an informal consensus of heads nodding to cancel the study session on the 19th. I heard a request from Director Miller for a study session on truancy, so I'd like to propose that Vice President Viall and I will work with the superintendent to complete the study session calendar for the year, so if there are other study sessions that you'd like for consideration, send me an email, and we'll work through that, and we'll get the draft calendar to you of study sessions, does that work? I see more informal nods, so that's what we will do. The next regularly scheduled business meeting is Thursday, February 26th, at 6:00 PM in the auditorium, and then the next one after that will be Thursday, March 12th, again at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. We have both an executive session and a closed session tonight.
Correct.
I'm going to turn that over to General Counsel to explain it.
The board will adjourn into executive session for approximately 30 minutes to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price, and to discuss with legal counsel representing the district litigation or potential litigation to which the district is or is likely to become a party, when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse or, adverse legal or financial consequence to the district. The closed session is a meeting that does not need to be noticed for the public or described.
Okay, so I will come out after executive session, adjourn the meeting, and then we will go back into closed session.
Correct.
All right. Thank you very much, we are into executive session.
Carla? Do you want to announce what time Sam's party is, if you might want to come? Sam?
Sam's party, I believe, starts at 3:45, Sam? 3:45, I believe.